Thank you and good evening to the Newburyport City Council Meeting of June 10th, 2024. Before we begin, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for two folks who've passed away recently, who are near and dear to members of our community. First, Gilda LaBarba, passed away on May 24th, 2024, at the age of 94 in Newburyport. She was born in 1929 in Canosa Sanita, Italy. After she immigrated from Italy in 1955, Gilda spent many years working at CBS Hytron Tube Manufacturing in Newburyport. She and her husband Nick also worked for many years making pizza and made the foundation of what Nick's Pizza is today. For those of you who are newcomers, take a ride down Merrimack Street and you will see it. Gilda made delicious pizza at Nick's Pizza for over 50 years. She'll be remembered for her kindness, generosity, and unwavering love for her family. She is survived by her son Frank LaBarba and his wife Tiziana, two brothers, two grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren. Our condolences go out to them. Next, Dorothy Barnes Shand, passed away on May 29th, 2024, at her home in Marion Junction, Alabama. She was 79 years old. She is survived by her two daughters, Councilor Heather Shand and State Representative Don Shand, her son-in-law, Dr. Brian Kreisler, and her granddaughter, May Shand Kreisler of Newburyport, Massachusetts. Dorothy was hired in 1967 by the Selma Superintendent Joseph Pickard when Selma began integrating its public schools. She taught at Francis Thomas School before spending the next 27 years teaching first grade at Meadowview Elementary, where she led its famous children's circus program. Two generations of students entered the school year, performing as lion tamers, magicians, knife throwers, and tightrope walkers. If Heather Shand ever challenges you to a knife-throwing contest, don't do it. She was most proud of her ability to teach reading schools to her students, a member of the professional organization Delta Kappa Gamma. She gave up her position when the organization refused to stop holding its Grail of the Year program at a segregated venue. So we know what kind of person she was. Our condolences go out to her Newburyport family and her surviving siblings. And please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before the clerk calls the roll, I just want to make sure the owl is working. I don't know if I hit something. We seem to be plugged in.
Is that on?
It's on.
It is?
Yep, blue light.
You can see it up there.
Okay, it's, um, yeah, I think, I think we are, we are good.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. Call the roll.
Roll call for the meeting of June 10th, 2024. Counselor Grantis.
Here.
Counselor Harmon.
Here.
Counselor Khan.
She may be remote, but is not as of yet.
Okay. Counselor Lane.
Here.
Counselor McCauley.
Here.
Counselor Preston.
Here.
Counselor Shan.
Here.
Counselor Wright.
Yeah.
Counselor Zee.
Here.
Counselor Dunne.
Here.
And Counselor Cameron.
Here.
Thank you. One absent, 10 present. We have a quorum.
Late files.
We have one late file. We have an appointment, Greg Ogden, I should say, a reappointment to the.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late files.
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that'll go to the regular agenda.
Public comment.
Public comment. We will take remote comments. If you want to raise your hand, I'll call on you after we do the in-person public comment. Thank you. And so, public comment, I'll call the names. If you can step up to the microphone, speak loudly, state your name and your address, and speak for up to two minutes on an agenda item that's on our current agenda tonight. So first of all would be Curtis Davis.
Thank you. My name is Curtis Davis, 6 Market Street, Unit 3, Newburyport. I'm up for appointment for the Waterfront Trust Board. And I just want to introduce myself, let you know that I moved here a year ago. And I have to tell you, I was a city manager, and I retired, and I had a, I love historical places. I had a, which in my city was an old building, 1902. We built it into lofts, and I was sitting there one afternoon, and I got a phone call from a guy that I didn't know, and he wanted to come meet me. And I said, okay, when do you want to meet me? And he said, now. And he came over 3:00 on Sunday afternoon, said, I'm the new CEO of the health system here, and I want to buy your building. And I went, well, it's not for sale. And he went, well, I'm going to make you an offer. And I went, okay. I sold it, and we looked at each other, my wife and I, and said, where do we want to go? And we'd been up here on vacation. We said, we love Newburyport, so we moved here. I have over 25 years' experience in local government. I was a commissioner for 10 years in the first-class township, was also on a council. I also changed the form of government in the city of Johnstown, Pennsylvania. I went back at a master of administration. I'm a certified city manager, and I'm an old-timer, but one of the things I've always been committed to is giving to the community. So no matter what community, I always get involved because I think that's, that's what you do when you're part of a community. When I was a city manager, I oversaw a $16,000 project to build a, a new conference center, $11 million redo of our stadium. And the last time they brought me in as an interim manager, I had to oversee a $120 million project to get rid of all the infiltration, which I read in the paper here, they're trying to do with the sewer lines. So I've been involved in a lot of those kind of things. I've had a chance to meet with the Waterfront Trust people, and I just think it's great. I think it's a good cooperative effort, and I'd like to be a part of it. Any questions?
None right now. Thank you. Thank you. We may add you to a couple of other boards and commissioners at the same time.
That's what I heard.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Leslie Echols.
Leslie, Leslie Echold, can you hear me okay?
Oh, yeah.
Leslie Echold, 36 Warren Street, and I too am here, hoping for a reappointment to the Waterfront Trust. And I'm here to answer any questions. I think many of you know that I have a deep interest in the parks in the city and am an advocate for parks and a deep believer in their importance to civic life. I'm also a gardener, so I appreciate the value of public parks and, and greenery. I'm also, I have a deep interest in good government and, and civic participation, and I welcome the opportunity to be able to continue this kind of work. So please, if you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. Hope everyone's doing well. Molly Ettenborough, City of Newburyport Sustainability Manager. I'm just here tonight regarding the solid waste collection and hauling contract. Wanted to thank Councilors McCauley and Khan for all of their help with that. This has been a two-year arduous process, and glad it's almost come to a conclusion, but just want to remind you, this is just about collection and hauling, not disposal. We did that last year. And we worked hard with DEP's contracting group, as well as with the mayor's office, Andrew Levine, and Tom Watkins from the DPS. If you have any questions, I am here. I'm going to go downstairs, but call me up if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any online comment? Seeing, oh, I do see one hand. So Shanna Sartori. Shanna, if you could, I'll allow you to talk, state your address, and up to two minutes on an agenda item. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Shanna Sartori. I live at 2 Garden Street in Newburyport, and I am the Chair of the Public Campaign. So I'm just here today to answer a few of the questions that anyone may have regarding the sculpture for the waterfront, commissioned by Eric Stevens.
Thank you, Shanna, and we will keep in mind that you're there. Appreciate that. And I'm going to mute you again. Vanessa Ayers. Vanessa, if you can state your address, and two minutes on a matter on our agenda.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Ayers. I live on 137 Water Street, and I'm representing the Gidey Press Center with any questions regarding our application for permit for the walk.
All right, thank you. Well, that'll be later in our agenda. Thank you, Vanessa, for being there. And seeing no other public comment, I'm going to try to lower hands, okay. Great, thank you for public comment, and now we will turn to the mayor's comment.
I didn't know Dorothy Shand, but from all I've heard, she was a hot ticket. And she certainly raised two incredible daughters, so. This past weekend was a big weekend for the fire department. Apart from having about three different fires over the last two weeks that they've had to knock down, we had the, their annual retirement dinner on Friday night at the Elks. John Parati and Paul Goldthorpe were both honored, who retired last year. Over 75-plus years of experience between the two of them. And then we also celebrated Fireman's Sunday this past Sunday. So first, I wanted to thank Council President, Counselor Shan, Counselor McCauley for, for being there on Sunday, and I just want to thank the chief for, for all the hard work that went into both of those events. FY25 budget, we're on the home stretch, guys. We're almost there. Three budget hearings coming up, water and sewer tomorrow night, social services on Wednesday, and then public safety next Tuesday. And I believe on Thursday, we're talking about capital improvement plans, so looking forward to having those conversations. Mayor Andrew R. Curtis Memorial Fund, the gentleman behind me, I'm going to get back to them in a second, but really excited. I think that's why we have a lot of people here tonight to hear about this, and it was great seeing that article in the paper today. Bartlett Mall Playground, ribbon cutting is going to be Thursday at 4:00 PM. We hope you all can make it. I want to thank Project Manager Kim Turner for seeing this project to completion. It's the first universally accessible playground in the city. And I also want to thank the Commission of Disabilities for all their advocacy for this project. It's pretty great. It's been open for a little while now, so it's going to be great officially having that ribbon cutting on Thursday. You know, we've had a lot of streets and sidewalks and, and roadwork happening around the city. You've also seen some crosswalk work up by Olive, so, you know, Myrtle and High Street, and then also on In Street and Pleasant, we have a new crosswalk going in as well. We're still about a couple more weeks to go to finish that. In Street just needs painting, and up on High Street, we're just waiting for the bricks to come in, but we're excited to get those two projects done. And I want to thank the DPS, particularly Wayne Amrau, for working with the neighbors there and coming up with a solution that worked for everybody. We're going to release an RFP for the Brown School this, this week, so that should be going out tomorrow, hopefully. And again, we just, we've been working on an RFP for, it seems like, a long time now, and so we hope that this one, moving forward, will, you know, maximize senior affordable housing for that space, but also look at proposals that could possibly keep the gym there as well as a community space. So we're looking forward to seeing what kind of response they get. This will be open for most of the summer, and it'll be like towards the end of August that we'll close that RFP. IT Director was here earlier, Dave Pedo. We're really excited. Dave came on last week. He just started his second week. He's up for appointment. He comes to us from Belmont, where he basically started the IT department there for over 20 years. But he lives in Salem, and, you know, again, it was just a great fit to get him here. And he has a lot of project management experience. As you know, James Pope got a lot of things going, and we made a lot of investments, so Dave's really the perfect person to come in and finish some of these projects. What else? Market Landing Park and Bulkhead Project celebrations, two weeks from tonight? No, next week.
Next Monday.
Next week, one week from tonight, we'll have our big celebration on Market Landing Park. I don't know if you've been down there, but I can't even tell you how many people have stopped me to talk about how wonderful it looks down there. We have a lot to celebrate. Congressman Seth Moulton will be here, because we're also celebrating the completion of the Bulkhead. And I didn't think we'd be able to see the Bulkhead as much, but if you walk from Tuscan on the boardwalk and come over, it stands right out with all that work they did on the embankment there. So that's kind of neat to see as well. We're going to celebrate all the different funding that came in for, for both of these projects, and then, you know, some of the organizations that got us across the finish line, the Mary Alice Accrelian Foundation, Institution for Savings, Newburyport Bank, that kind of got us those amenities. And it's going to be just ready to go. They paved the parking lot today, and so we should be ready to go by next Monday, but I hope you all can make it. This is literally decades in the making, and so it's really, again, this was a team effort all around, and I appreciate your support for it. And I, again, I think there's just lots to celebrate next Monday at 2:00 PM. Route 1 and the Merrimack Intersection Meeting with MassDOT, that will be on June 13th. But there's also going to be some work happening on Thursday. This just came up, so some of the paving, if you saw like winter and summer streets, and the on-ramps there, that's all going to be taking place on Thursday, so there will be some detours. I put that in, you know, in the report here that I sent to you earlier today, so if you want to check that out, but that will also be up on our website. And I'm going to ask if there's any questions, and then I think, if it's okay with Council President, I'll introduce the gentleman behind me. Okay?
To that presentation, yes.
Okay. Any questions first? Oh.
Have we gotten the appraisal on the Brown School done yet?
No.
Do we have plans to do that?
Uh, you know, I, there's not a plan right now to do it, but we could certainly move forward after we maybe get some proposals.
Other questions, comments for the mayor? Counselor Donahue?
Yeah, so when the RFP goes out, where will that live for us to view? Be on the website, or?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we'll, it will be open until the end of August, so once we get all those proposals, I mean, I think we'll probably think of a way that we can post them on the website and also share them with you. Again, anything that happens with the Brown School is going to be decided by the council. I think this was just a way to get something started there, so we can have some, either some good information to, to base what happens next on, or we get some really great proposals that, that's worth looking into.
Oh, okay, I guess to clarify, Matt, how do we know what's in the RFP?
Oh, that's good. Well, it'll be released tomorrow, so.
Okay. So will that get like sent to the councilors, or just be on the website, or?
We could probably send it once we release it. Sure, yeah, we can do that.
That'd be great. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else for the mayor?
Without, just the RFP, I mean, I did send it around to a couple of councilors, so those that I did, thank you for your, your opinions. That was, that was helpful. So.
Without further ado, do you want to introduce some mayor, or?
Sure. Well, I'll just, I'll just say a couple things. This is really exciting, one. So it's been hard sitting on this for as long as we have, and they were sitting on it a lot longer, so I, I know how difficult this has been, but, you know, we've been wanting to, to talk about this for, for a long time, because it really could have just long-lasting impacts here in the city in such a good, good way. The mayor, Andrew, Andrew R. Curtis Memorial Fund is here to speak to you tonight, and I'm going to let them tell their story. It's really, it's really a neat one. Behind me is Joe Cleary. He's, has a law practice in Haverhill with his brother. We have Ned Notus McConneri and Brad Beddingfield from Hemmingway &amp; Barnes. They will be the trustees moving forward, and it's just kind of a neat story, so I'll let them tell it. Mayor Andrew R. Curtis, if you're leaving tonight, if you look up at, at the Archway, he is the far-right pitcher, not in here on your way out in the lobby, so you can take a look up there and see Mayor Andrew R. Curtis. But this fund was set up by his grandson, who died a few years ago, 92 years old, I believe? Is that right? 92? And he wanted to set this up to honor his, his grandfather, which is pretty neat. So I'll turn it over to these gentlemen.
Great, thank you. So, so welcome. I had a chance to say hello to these gentlemen earlier. Be it 10 or so-minute presentation, however you want to do it, if you want to fight for the microphone, that'd be great. I'm sure we'll have at least a couple of comments or questions from councilors, and I'd, I'd welcome that. But this, the actual process, we have this as an order around this so-called nonjudicial settlement, and that will be going to committee, and we'll refer that properly in our regular meeting, but there will be lots of due diligence on this, so councilors will get to weigh in on this. And just from my standpoint, this is kind, an unusual opportunity from the city side, so I think there's lots of questions that you'll have. Don't expect to have everything known to you in the next 15 minutes. Again, we'll have, I'm sure, at least multiple committee meetings on this, but, but welcome, gentlemen, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, councilors. Good evening, and thank you, I guess, to, to the mayor. I guess he's not in the room at the moment, but.
He's watching you on TV. He was in the hallway.
We've been up to, to meet with the mayor, and with Andrew, and with Rich Jones and so forth. My name is Ned McConneri. I'm at Him &amp; Wayne Barnes in Boston, where I'm a lawyer and trustee. We've been doing that at Him &amp; Wayne Barnes since 1863, and that's apropos of what we're here for you to talk about tonight, which is the Mayor Curtis Memorial Fund. I want to say that it's not brand-new to us. We've been struggling in the courts now since 2019 to clarify that this money is set aside for the city of Newburyport. So we've been working hard on behalf of the city of Newburyport for several years in the probate court, fighting a challenge to the will, so that Wayne Curtis's intentions could be upheld, and these funds could be set aside for the city of Newburyport. Happy to report that that was done. We've got it all resolved, and we now have the, the Mayor Curtis Memorial Fund. There are materials that were circulated. I don't know if everyone had a chance to read them. I was very pleased to see that there was also an article in the newspaper this morning, so certainly we don't come here without some information having been shared. But there are a couple of things we need to, to deal with, which is why we're here, and there are two specific aspects of setting up this fund that need some attention from this council and from the city of Newburyport. And my Joseph Cleary is here to talk a little bit about Wayne Curtis and Mayor Curtis and the fund. And my partner, Brad Beddingfield, is a national expert in the tax aspects of this, explaining why the, we need the nonjudicial settlement agreement and why we're here. But most importantly, it's wonderful to bring happy news. It's not often that lawyers get to come and share happy news. Usually, I'm putting on my boxing gloves and going into court. In this case, we prevailed on behalf of the city of Newburyport, on behalf of Wayne Curtis's intentions. So I'm going to let Joe Cleary talk a little bit about Wayne Curtis.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Joe Cleary. I'm a lawyer in Haverhill, 345 Main Street, with my brother Jay Cleary. Presently, we're affiliated with the Downey Law Group as we age, but I want to just briefly talk about Wayne Curtis, and I think I can start with Richard Jones, because years ago, Mr. Curtis had some thoughts of trying to do something for the city of Newburyport. He'd mentioned his grandfather had been a mayor, and I said, well, why don't you sort of feel the city out and see if you're comfortable with how they respond to you? So he, somewhere in the course of travels, realized the firehouse clock wasn't keeping great time, and went, I said, well, why don't you get out and see someone, see, see how it works out? So you could finish that story, but it, it happily ended that he donated money and, and you had the clock repaired. Because when I first talked to Rich about it, he said, I remember him, he's the guy who helped fix the clock. So he's had this interest, but he's a very quiet man, kept to himself mostly, and lived in an apartment, a nice apartment with a nice view of the river, but he was not a real estate property owner, and obviously saved his money and invested it. And when the time came for him to make some plans, he suggested that he wanted to do something for the city, but he still wanted to keep a little bit of a hand in it. So he liked the idea of setting up this memorial trust, which would be permanent and perpetual. It's not going to run out, as far as we can tell. And it's private. So what he had suggested in there was to leave 80% of the annual income to go to the city of Newburyport, keep the 20% that doesn't go, and add it to the fund, and hopefully have the fund build up through the additional income that's not spent, plus the value of the investments increase, and, and it just will add up and continue. So that's basically what's been done. Brad, we'll talk a little bit about the tax effects, that maybe more money can be given to the city under current tax laws. Wayne set this up in 2012. It was only going to be funded upon his death by any money that was left after his other estate bequests were paid and expenses were, were made. So it wasn't until 2018 that he died, and it took several years to get this estate finished, and with the help of Ned and, and his staff, we didn't have any real problem in having the will interpreted the way that it was written and the, the way that it was intended to pass. So with that in mind, I'm just sort of leaving you now with a, a trust that's in place. It's just a matter of the city accepting it, and then between the trustees and, and the city, there'll be arrangements made for regular distributions that the city can really count on. It may not reduce the tax rate too much, but it'll be a pretty steady guaranteed income that can go to places and uses in the city that you might not otherwise have the chance to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for, for inviting us to, to talk about this with you. So my name's Brad Beddingfield. I'm Chair of the nonprofit practice at Him &amp; Wayne Barnes. I've worked with Ned there for about seven years. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the nonjudicial settlement agreement, why it's in there, and, and what that would accomplish. So as Joe mentioned, the original trust provides for a regular distribution every year of 80% of the income. Mr. Curtis was very clear in the trust instrument that he wants this trust to be exempt from tax, which is in all our mutual best interests. For a trust like this, which is called a private foundation for federal tax purposes, to be exempt from tax, it has to have certain provisions in there, and this trust does not. So normally, when you want to add provisions to a trust like this, you need to go to court with court and get court permission to modify the trust to add those provisions. However, in appropriate circumstances, Massachusetts law allows all the interested parties to come to a, a private agreement, a so-called nonjudicial settlement agreement, to make these kinds of changes, and that's what you see in the materials. So when you look through that nonjudicial settlement agreement, what you'll see are a bunch of things referencing the federal tax code. This is including all the provisions that a trust like this, a private foundation for federal tax purposes, is required to have. And the one that's really going to have, make a substantive difference has to do with that 80% of income requirement in the trust instrument. Federal tax law actually allow, requires the trust to do a little bit more. Private foundations like this are required to distribute out at least 5% of their net assets every year. That's a function of federal tax law imposed on top of the state law considerations around what the trust instrument says. You don't want to have a conflict between what the trust instrument says and what federal tax law requires. So the nonjudicial settlement agreement would modify that provision to say that every year, the trust will distribute the greater of those two things, the greater of the 80% of income that Mr. Curtis provided in the trust instrument, and the 5% of net asset value that federal tax law requires. And there are a few other changes here and there. We're happy to talk about that, but that's the one that's going to make a substantive difference, and it would only result in more money coming out of the trust rather than less, under any circumstances. The other change in the nonjudicial settlement agreement is to allow Joe, as the trustee, to appoint additional co-trustees to help manage the trust, and that's where, where we would come in. That's a brief overview of the nonjudicial settlement agreement and its impact. I'm happy to talk in more detail about that if anyone has any questions.
Great, thank, please.
Let me just say, very important two things. One is, if you've read the materials and the article in the paper, you know that presently the assets in the trust are worth about $5 million. So if it's 5% per year that's being distributed, you can do the math, it's a lot of money, it's a wonderful thing for the city of Newburyport. One of the things that's critical to know is, it has to be used for charitable purposes. So, and the charitable purposes for which it can be used.
So, and the charitable purposes for which it can be used are defined by the Internal Revenue Code. So it can't be used to repave streets or fix, you know, sidewalks, things like that that are the usual activities of the city necessarily. But there are lots of charitable activities that can be used to support. I know we've talked with the mayor about the new recreation center, and whether or not these funds could be used to help with the financing of that. That's something additional, that's something charitable. The answer to that is yes. And as trustees, if we get disapproved, we would be open to that possibility, and thinking about that as one of the kind of premier kind of things that would be funded in these first, you know, few years. This is perpetual. So after the rec center is all built, and hopefully with the help of the Curtis Fund, this will be going on for years with other purposes. And we would not plan to use all the money in any given year for the rec center or for one particular activity that I can anticipate. So there are funds for other things, music programs in the schools, programs at the library, different activities that you all know so well here in the city of Newburyport, you know, resettlement of refugees, whatever, you know, people decide to do. They're all charitable activities, but they do have to be charitable activities. So I hope we've, through the materials and the presentation, provided some information, but happy to answer any questions if you have any.
If anybody question, comment? And there'll be lots of committee vetting. We are also being advised by our city solicitor, Caris North, on this, because it's, the nonjudicial settlement is a little complicated the first 10 times you read it, if you're not a lawyer, and we'll also, we'll have due diligence there. Any comments, questions? Byron, or Counselor Lane, sorry.
Is there an independent money manager on that fund? Or is that in-house with...
That will be done at Hem and Wayne Barnes. We have about $7 billion under management at the present time, so this is something we've been doing for a long time.
Seven million?
Billion.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And I've been happy to work with Caris North and work on all that, so happy to do it. Also, you know, happy to come and answer further questions, or whether you want somebody to come to a committee meeting or otherwise, happy to do it. And in the future, with any other gifts, we're going to be consulting with you and consulting with other city officials to come up with the right programs that work for everybody. So thank you very much. Good news, and happy to report it.
Thank you. And on behalf of all my colleagues, we're not always in unanimity, but I know we are extremely, extremely grateful for this opportunity, and thank you for making this clearer. We will definitely be calling on you as we work through our process, and we're going to have a long relationship, so we really, really appreciate it. And thank you to the Curtis family. And yes, Mayor Curtis was, I think, 1896 to 1897. I believe he then worked at the Hat Factory on Merrimack Street for the next 20 years. He worked at a factory afterwards, so mayor was his highest political office, and then he lived his life and worked in town at a factory, so that's great. Counselor Preston?
Yeah, so I have a number of questions, but I'm happy to not do them now, but the question is, can we expect that the trustees would be available to answer questions in committee meetings?
Yes, I think Ned said they would, and I certainly think that would be the way we'd operate, yeah.
Okay, then I'll hold my question still to committee then. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you for the applause, on behalf of Wayne Curtis.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I hope the rest of the meeting is as happy and cheerful as I had. Thank you.
Chances are.
Okay, that will bring us to the consent agenda.
Rich is joyous tonight. The approval of the minutes for May 28th. We have six applications. First application is a Radiant E U Aesthetics sign, license and permits. We're all actually going to license and permits. 209 is a block party on Lafayette Street, August 3rd. 210 is the High Street Mile, once again, August 4th, 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. 211 is the Geiger Walk Against Domestic Violence, October 6th. Application 212 is the Parklet application from Mandriva. The next one, 213, is the Sidewalk Tent application from Soak. Two communications, 556 memo on the FY 2023 audit to go to B&amp;F. Communication 557 is the SOI, Statement of Interest from Widder Tech, to go to Budget and Finance and Committee of the Whole. There are two transfers, 195 DPS principal, $25,000, to Highway Fuel Tanks, 20, and Fuel Oil, $5,000, Budget and Finance. Transfer 196, Long Term Debt, $30,700, to Long Term Debt Interest and Long Term Debt Interest of $70,000, to Highway Maintenance Drainage of $100,000, Budget and Finance. There are two reappointments. Edward, aka Ted Waldron III, 14 Oak Street, Newburyport Licensing Board, until 7/1/2030. It says the General Government, but on the suggestion of the President, we changed that to License and Permits. Appointment 495, Jeanette Isabella, 100 Water Street, to the Emma Andrews Library, until Following items are removed from their respective committees, Budget and Finance. Orders 573, 574, 576. General Government, Appointment 493. Community Services, Appointment 488, 489. Order 577, License and Permits, Application 206 and 207. Planning and Development, Communication 554, and Order 578. Public Works and Safety, Order 566. And that is the end of the consent agenda this evening.
What is the wish of the council?
Motion to approve and collectively to receive and file the mayor's update.
Motion made by Counselor Zee, seconded by Counselor Preston. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes handily, and we would then move into the regular agenda.
Mr. President, I was not sure if the motion on the late file included anything to do with Greg Ogden going to license and permits.
I think we could just deal with that when we get to the communications as an application. But yeah, so we could actually start with that, since we're right there.
Motion to refer to license permits if you want to double. Yeah, so moved.
Quick second.
Okay. So just to be clear, so this is the late file, Appointment 496, Greg Ogden to Licensing Committee, and the referral would be to License and Permits. Any further discussions of motion made and seconded? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Application 214.
Communications.
Application 214?
Application 214, as you mentioned, Juneteenth Flag Raising on Wednesday, June 19th.
Motion to waive the rules, declare an emergency preamble, and approve collectively on first reading applications 214 and 215.
Second. Exactly said. Thank you so much.
We'll do them collectively. Nice job, Counselor Harmon.
Oh. You're not done.
He's too busy.
We don't have enough time for these to go through the normal committee process. Both of these events are very community-focused. The annual block party on Ting Street, I've spoken to the organizer who submitted the application, is by all accounts a column affair, kids on scooters and bikes for an afternoon, people bringing potluck, and the Juneteenth, I think, speaks for itself. Lovely flag raising opportunity to honor that occasion here at City Hall.
Great, thank you. Any questions, discussion, and who was the second on that?
Yeah, not the...
I'll second.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. Thank you, Counselor Harmon. Transfers, there are no transfers. Second reading appointments, there are none of them.
Orders. We have the first order, 579, which is the FY 2025 Water and Sewer Rates.
Motion to refer 579 to Budget and Finance and Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Sorry, collectively, 580, which is a gift acceptance for Pete's Corner, $1,112, to Budget and Finance as well. 581, which is a municipal fee schedule fiscal year 2025, Budget and Finance and Committee of the Whole. And Order 582, Curtis Memorial Fund, Budget and Finance, Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Second.
Great, thank you for the mega-motion there. So motion made and seconded by Counselor McCauley, made by Counselor Zee. Any discussion? Okay, we can still do a voice vote on these, I believe.
Can, just by wait. For the record, we have Committee of the Whole for 579, 581, and 582, all going to Budget and Finance, otherwise.
Correct. Yes. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay, everybody in favor? Thank you. Ordinances.
We have a second reading of the Amendment to the Municipal Fee Street Permits. It's Ordinance 169.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
Okay. Motion made, Counselor McCauley, seconded by Counselor Granis. Any further discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Roll call on approving Ordinance 169, second reading. Counselor Granis.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
Counselor Khan is no longer with us, has not joined us yet. Counselor Lane?
No.
That's a no. Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Dunne?
No.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Two no, one absent. Motion passes second reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee items.
Motion collectively to approve Order 573 and Order 574.
Second.
573 is a gift acceptance of $6,300 as part of a broader funding package for utility vehicle for the fire department, and 574 is a gift acceptance for $1,000 towards STEM scholarships. I'll tell you a little bit about each. In terms of the fire department vehicle, this is a replacement vehicle, and this is a combination, as I mentioned, of funding. The $6,300 is their utility, pardon me, is the gift acceptance from some folks in the business park, but there are some other grants that are accepted. There's one, for example, that pays $4,000 a quarter that's being accumulated towards this, and ultimately, this vehicle that we're talking about is about $34,000 in total to purchase. It is a replacement. The fire department currently has what they call an Argo, or is an Argo, but the vehicle's not really sufficient, doesn't work well, isn't fit for purpose. It's a little bit bigger than I think they'd like, a little bit more unwieldy, so the effort was made to try and replace it with something that will fit a little bit better with what their use is and what their desire is, and in large part, this gets used for any sort of off-road or off-the-beaten-path response. Also, you may see it around for events in the city, such as when we had the concert down on the waterfront, the large concert and so forth. And so we did have a little bit of context conversation in committee about the need for this and the explanation of replacement. We had the benefit of the Chair of Public Safety with us, who explained a little bit more as well. The department did solicit three quotes against this and use those quotes in combination with sort of the design of the vehicle. The use is against the other pieces of funding, like the Emergency Planning Zone grant, which is really drawn as a result of us being in the Seabrook Power Plant radius, if you will, is broad, so it goes towards emergency preparedness. This vehicle is expected to live in Station 1, is where it will be housed. It was three to zero to accept the grant, accept the gift, pardon me, committee, and the chief is here as well, if you have any follow-up questions that I am not able to address. In terms of 574, this is a $1,000 gift towards STEM scholarships, as mentioned. Not a ton of discussion in committee. Our primary conversation was around, why wouldn't this be the schools, and since it was noted as NRYS, and that's because these are actually NRYS programs, as it was explained to us. So these $1,000 will go towards some scholarships for folks who, kids who want to sign up and do those programs. This was also three to zero. So this is a collective on 573 and 74. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zee. Any discussion? So the motion is to collectively approve orders 573 and 574.
Correct.
And hearing, no further discussion, we can do a roll call on these. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No.
Next up is a motion to approve Order 576, FY '24 spending, fund spending limit increase.
Second.
All right, so there are two orders related to revolving funds. Without getting too far into the details, as you know, we have a number of revolving funds set up in the city. Revolving funds are now created by ordinance, but the funding limit is set annually by order. We did set the spending limits for FY '24. This is a retroactive increase to the spending limit, back to the beginning of FY '24, in other words, for the next, you know, 20 days or so, and it only is changing the funding limit for rec services, and it's proposing to go from 550 to 625. First of all, they're basically at their spending limit. When we had the finance director before us, they were at 549 and change, so they are inhibited from spending further from this revolving fund without us either increasing this spending limit or, you know, basically doing them as transfers-type thing, or approving expenses in that way. In terms of why the increase is deemed needed, the primary reason given was inflation, so as you can expect, they're running these programs. I know councilors who've been on for a while recall this continuous conversation, but they run programs, so they're ingesting funds from users of those programs, and then paying out to the people who, obviously, they either contract with individually or as companies to offer these services and these programs, and they anticipate that if it's bumped up to 625, that they'll be able to close out the fiscal year and expend, you know, the funds that they need to, to run the programs through the end of this month, which is also the end of the fiscal year. Now, this is not a permanent fix. This is, again, for this year. That corresponding order that I mentioned is, I believe, Number 575, and that's to set the FY '25 spending limits in there. It is proposed to go up to 650. That is not coming out tonight. This one was deemed desirable to come out because of the time part of it, that they're trying to get through the end of the fiscal year here. The other one also needs to pass before the fiscal year opens, but wasn't, didn't have to pass tonight, so likely it will come out at the end of the month in our last regular meeting. It's not without any controversy. It was two to one in committee. I was the dissenting vote, and we held on to, as I mentioned, the FY '25 one, in order to have the budget workshop, which is coming up on Wednesday, and discuss further with the department head. There was also a request for more detail on the spending and categorization and so forth, which is something that's required by some DLS documentation that was turned up by the Ward Five Council, and the department head is working to present that, and I will, of course, circulate anything that I do receive. So again, this is a singular change from 550 to 625 for the next 20 days, and then the fiscal year will roll over, and we'll have another discussion on this, perhaps even more in-depth when we do the other order. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that thorough explanation. Any further comment, Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, so the chair is correct there. Thank you, Counselor President. The chair is correct. There was some controversy on it. We asked for a simple accounting of what was spent through this year. We were told we'd have it Friday moments ago. We were told, we're not going to get it till after Wednesday along the way. So it is required by law. There were some simple questions about whether we were blending funds. We don't think that's the case, but whether we were blending funds from donations as well as grants, as well as the revolving fund along the way. We asked for a simple accounting, we didn't get it. So in that aspect, I'd like to make a motion to move this to a date certain of 624.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. So there was a motion to approve, and now we're doing this motion to move to a date certain. You said June...
24. Our next, council meeting, 624.
24, okay. Okay, so that motion was made and seconded.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, discussion. Okay, not everyone at once. Okay, I'm sorry. I had my head down scribbling notes.
That's okay.
How about Counselor McCauley, since he made the motion?
Okay, I'll just explain why I did it. Again, we had asked for it. Finance director wasn't able to provide an accurate accounting. Again, we were told through email that we'd have it last Thursday or Friday, and moments ago, we were just told we won't get it till after Wednesday, which is the accounting, simple accounting. It's supposedly immunist, et cetera, along the way, and just, I'm sure why we don't have it. Thank you.
Counselor Preston? And then, so Counselor Preston, then Chief of, what is, Chief of Policy, Levine. And we are joined by Counselor Khan remotely. So, welcome, Counselor Khan.
Yeah, thanks. So, I guess, how come we couldn't get it? I guess, and maybe that's really the question to you. But then, also, and I apologize if you said it in your reporting, but do they have $75,000 of anticipated spending between now and the end of the fiscal year, 20 days or so?
Counselor Zied, then we can have Andrew Levine speak.
I can't answer the first question about the timing of the report, but I can say, you know, that this new amount is not the product of an exact spreadsheet, I would say. But yes, they anticipate spending, they anticipate 625 would take them to the end of the year. I don't know if the Finance Director's here, if he's done any crunch, any numbers to specifically say what their estimate is. But I'm guessing, if he were to speak and he were here, that he would say, this is an estimate of what they think will get them through the fiscal year with a little bit of cushion to do so. It's the best I could offer you.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, the Finance Director's not on remotely, so, Mr. Levine, if you want to?
Yeah, I'll just, I guess, as a combined mea culpa here, I was following the conversation and thought that the goal was to try to have the numbers for Wednesday night's meeting, when the budget will be considered for the Social Services Department, so NYSS will be there. I thought the plan was to try to have those materials together then. They were sent to me on Thursday. I think I'm the bottleneck here. I reviewed them and thought that they were in a presentation form and wanted to make sure that it was ready to go for, you know, a more robust conversation on Wednesday. The accounting's all there, it's easy to pull. I'm sorry if I'm the holdup on this, but I must have misunderstood the conversation. But I think there's not a concern for this year's numbers. When I heard the conversation, it was really around making sure that we had the extra information for approving the FY '25 part. But, yeah, apologies if I misunderstood the conversation, but I think the numbers are all there, so it should be in good shape.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Harmon?
Thank you. I am surprised a little bit with this change to a date certain. I respect my colleagues' questions on wanting to see a thorough accounting, very fair and realistic question, reasonable question for us to be asking. I would just say, we are at the end of the school year. This is the time when this department will be hosting camps and seasonal folks and putting together programming for, it will be a very busy time in service of a lot of parents and families in town. And it was clear to me, and I will defer to the Chair of Budget and Finance, if he recalls differently, from the comments of the Finance Director, that these funds needed to be available for the remainder of the fiscal year for them to continue to execute the programs, as I've already said, which are quite numerous and busy at this point. So, I would implore my colleagues to allow us to move forward with this revolving fund increase at this meeting, so that we don't impair this department from doing their jobs. While we also have an opportunity this week and through the rest of the budget process to have some of those questions answered and to understand, as we, as a committee, decided not to defer the conversation around the revolving fund for the coming fiscal year, but let's get this year completed and allow folks to do their jobs.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Zied?
Thank you. I just want to explain why this is controversial, I guess, or why it's challenging. I know some of us have different number of years on this, but I remember when we were at, like, 350, and then it was the end of the fiscal year, so then we were at 400, then it was the end of the fiscal year, so we were at 450. And we've just been basically nonstop, and now inflation's the new kid in town, and so we need to go up to 625. But the real problem is, is this is structurally unsound. It's unsound to have a fund this big, in my opinion, that has basically a single person. Doesn't matter who that person is, doesn't matter what department it is. As was pointed out in committee, this revolving fund dwarfs the other ones by a huge margin. You know, I think intent-wise, revolving funds were created by the state to facilitate small transactions. You know, we see other funds in the 15, $20,000 range. Some spend $800 to $1,000 a year. Where at 625, we are starting to rival enterprise fund territory. To the Finance Director's point, who is present, we do have some challenges because we're a little bit hamstrung by state law with how we can set things up. But it is time to kind of resolve this. And so, I too respect, say, for example, the Ward Four Counselor's point. You know, it's always better to deal with it tomorrow. And unfortunately, tomorrow keeps coming, and our result is to just keep on saying, okay, let's just go up, in this case, by 75. If you look at the next years, it's to go up to 650 and make that the, and there has to be no confusion here about accusation or anything like that. It's just, it is our responsibility to set up governance structures that make sense. We spend a lot of time on every penny and finance. We just took in the city audit documents today. Doesn't mean we don't trust that somebody's doing their job, it's just it is our job to have that oversight. So, you know, whether it gets continued or not, the structural instability isn't going to be solved in two weeks, and we're just going to have to try and get through that in committee. Thank you.
Counselor Harmon?
An alternative structure was discussed at the committee meeting, and an alternative structure was not provided, and another option is not available to us. So, with respect, I agree. This is not, you know, sustainable, this is not the best approach. What then is the right approach? And so, to my mind, having some collaboration with the Finance Director, the administration in this body, to come up with what that looks like and set that entity up in a way that we can all agree is the right way and the proper way to evolve this going forward. What is not in the best interest of the city community and our, the people that we represent is to just simply say no without an alternative option provided.
Okay. Counselor Khan, you have your hand up, and I think you can unmute yourself. Nice to see you.
Yes, thank you, everyone. No, I appreciate the conversation. I do think that this is something that, time after time, for the revolving account, we've been hearing the same concerns being raised and the desire for maybe some alternative methods for looking at how we could best do this type of large, you know, this large accumulation. What are the best practices that we could employ? So, for me, we actually have the, you know, for what's finishing out for fiscal year 2024, a conversation, which is what we're doing today. But I do think we're not going to lose this request from the council. And also, individual counselors, maybe looking at other communities, are asking our Finance Director. So, I would encourage everyone to support, you know, Orders 576. And then, that we, with the other, with our order coming up for the next fiscal year, that we really do have those conversations on what are some best methods. So, maybe this is it, I don't know, but maybe it's more on the accounting and how that transparency can be provided. How, you know, the sources of the income that we're getting from the fees, there could be a little bit more ways to transparency, what's coming in, how it's being spent in a reporting on an annual basis, because this is something that's so high. So, I'm eager to explore that and talk more with my colleagues. But for this specific one, it doesn't make sense for us to try and force that key. And I think that's what others are trying to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Preston?
Yeah, thank you. So, I too, I did listen to the committee, and I too have my concerns about this, you know, the very high number in this revolving fund. So, I very much want to see us take a very hard look at this and try to find some alternatives as we move forward. But then, tantamount to this, I guess, my question would be to the Chief of Staff. You know, always trying to find the middle in the compromise position here. I mean, it seems unlikely to me that two weeks would, you know, if we were to move this to a date certain, that U Services would shut down over the next two weeks. I mean, you know, invoicing takes time, we, you know, you have so many business days to pay invoices. It just seems to me that if we were to move this to a date certain, so that we could satisfy the counselor's needs for the information that you said you have and should not be hard to bring forward, it just, I don't see why we couldn't give it two more weeks. But if you can tell me that U Services would shut down in the next two weeks, I would reconsider.
I try not to be hyperbolic. I can say that the ask was made, you know, with this timeline in mind, not with the 24th. And it would be extremely helpful for the operations of the department to get this passed. Shut down, I don't want to say that, but I think this was done on purpose to try to make sure that we could hit, get beyond that ceiling. So, that this is a deadline we're talking about. It would be, I think, in the city's best interest to have this passed.
Okay. Further discussion, Counselor McCauley, and then Zied.
Yeah, I will draw my motion. I think the point is made, is that we were promised information, we weren't given it on the timeline. There are consequences for that, whether the department has to shut down or not, isn't our concern. Quite frankly, it is the concern of the administration, I get that. But when we ask for timelines and we don't have them met, then it throws everything off, and that's really my point. Thank you.
I will. I will draw my second.
Okay, so, we're back to the main motion on the floor. Any further discussion, Counselor Zied?
Yeah, just briefly, I guess, you know, something I've been thinking about a lot in the last couple of weeks is, you know, what is the role of the council, which probably I shouldn't think about too much, because it drives you nuts. But it's just so interesting to hear the conversation. I mean, is it the council's responsibility to change this structure? I'm asking the question retrospectively or introspectively a little bit, as much as I am rhetorically to my colleagues. This is, as you've heard now from several, this comes up every year. And every year, it's the same thing. We waited until the fund got to $549,000 to bring in something. As Chair of Budget, I do my best to honor and accommodate the request of the administration. They say turn it around in two weeks, and I do my best to try and do that, because I want the debate. I'm not necessarily trying to curve the structure to make an outcome happen. But, you know, this, I mean, to me, where this is headed is that, you know, the Ward Four Counselors, what other structures are there? To me, there are two options. One is, we can do this by more of a transfer style, where when you run out of funds like this, you come in and ask for specific expenses, bundle them up, and then you bring them in, and you make the justification. You don't just come in and say, well, inflation's bad, so we need another $75,000 credit line increase, can we have it? And second of all, is if there isn't facility in the state law to say, allow enterprise funds, then we may just have to make one by basically doing a home rule and saying, we're going to set up an enterprise fund, because this is getting crazy out of control. If it's 650 next year, it'll be 750 the next, and we're on our way to a million. And that's really kind of, despite today's conditions, is still a lot of money. And remember, it's about structure and how many people control and have oversight, and basic accounting tells you you need to have controls. So, I'll yield with that.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's a good thought. And just from the Chair's vantage, you know, it's a finite universe of municipalities in Massachusetts that have revolving funds of various sources. I'm sure we could do some resort, you know, quantify what the problems are with the current structure and see if there are other mechanisms that others may use around Chapter 44. So, I can see the thought bubbles going above the Chief of Policy, so I think that sounds good. Okay, so, motion on the floor is to approve this order. We, no further discussion, we'll do a roll call.
Roll call on approving Order 576. Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counsel, Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
No.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes ten to one.
That's it for Budget and Finance for tonight. Sadly, the punishment continues Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Tomorrow night, we have DPS Sewer and Water Enterprise. So, I can already see that, you know, there's a lot, particularly with CIP. So, what I'm going to ask counselors, again, to do as we did with the schools, is try and really think about refining down to three questions or so you want to ask, three projects you want to focus on. I also want to remind folks that the wastewater treatment facility relocation idea, you know, is also in the transfer. And so, we'll take that up in the transfer, because it's actually requested to be funded. So, tomorrow night is DPS Water and Sewer Enterprise. Before I leave tomorrow night, the water sewer rates came in tonight. Those are also going to go tomorrow in conversation, because they're all connected. The budget is based on those increases, about 9% or so on water and about 3% or so on sewer, 6% on average. So, please come prepared to talk about that. Wednesday night, Social Services. Sounds like we may be able to get the information, at least that was just discussed here sometime during the day on Wednesday, I hope that we can. And then, Thursday night is not a workshop, it's a standing meeting, but the big transfer, Number 194, the $3.2 million one, that's the night, and it's Committee of the Whole. So, I'm suggesting to you, if you're interested in any of those, that you please consider attending. We have a number of other Committee of the Whole items for revolving fund spending limits the next year. We'll try and take up on Thursday as well. We have a couple of small gifts. We have an audit, we have some small transfers. So, the committee remains extraordinarily busy. So, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday as well. And that's it for Budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Services, Counselor Preston?
Yeah, thank you. Motion to approve Order 577?
Second.
Thank you. So, 577 is the acceptance of the public art. Special Projects Manager Turner was present and gave us a brief overview of the work from the Public Arts Committee that led to the recommendation of the sculpture, from 21 different applications celebrating the city's maritime history. Final sculpture choice was unanimous. The artist's rendering, as well as his resume, is in the order, if you're interested in taking a look at it. The total cost for the structure, sculpture structure, is about $75,000, which will be funded through two $15,000 grants from the Cultural Council, as well as existing funds from a previous rail trail grant. The Public Arts Committee and the project manager will work closely with the artist to ensure that the project does not come in over that $75,000 budget. The timeline, the artist feels that he needs about four months for the fabrication of the piece, so we should expect it to be installed in spring of 2025. There was a lot of discussion in committee on the durability of the sculpture and expected maintenance. The sculpture itself is made out of metal, and the sails of the sculpture are actually made out of perforated metal. It would be footed in concrete, and therefore, it should be able to endure the winds and the weather down on the waterfront. It also should not need any ongoing maintenance. And the structure will be added to the city's Master Art Insurance Policy, so we would be insured if there were anything catastrophic that happened to it. It will not obscure any sightlines, and it will be a minimum of 10 feet off the ground to ensure that people do not climb on it and hurt themselves. And it came out of committee, three to zero to approve.
Thank you. Counselor Harmon?
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly recognize the work of the Chair in getting the Public Art Committee to where it is, working through the process of appointments to that committee and to tonight's hopeful, successful approval of the first public art. It's a big milestone, a big step forward for us, for new report.
Counselor McCauley?
Thank you, Counselor President. Yeah, I too would like to comment on the smooth nature of the Public Arts Committee. It was cobbled together at the end of last year, and I think it had an extended timeline, and I'm grateful that we were able to get that. The only question I have is that, I understand the $30,000, which he accepted, but I do have a question, and I'm not sure if it came up in committee. Of the additional $45,000, that was an orphaned account on a rail trail project. This is not rail trail, this is park. And so, therefore, was there any discussion about doing a transfer accordingly that would have accounted for, you know, minus out of the rail trail project, plus into the park public art project?
Counsel, Counsel Preston.
Yeah, we did not actually discuss that in committee, so I would look to other Special Projects Manager or the Chief of Staff to be able to answer a question about that.
Counsel Zed.
All right. I'll just speak to it from a Budget and Finance perspective. When we brought through the, so first of all, yes, when we brought through the grant acceptance, the $30,000, we did ask, is this to cover the entire project? The answer was no. The total is estimated to be more around that $75,000 figure, so the balance is 45. As the Counsel from Ward 5 points out correctly, when the revetment project was done at the, on that portion of the rail trail, we appropriated funds. I can't say, sitting here, that I pulled that transfer directly, but the argument from the planning director is that that transfer, the purpose of that transfer is met by this, just as it would have been met for something down that way. So they feel comfortable expending the funds without the need for a subsequent transfer. Surely that could be the subject of debate, and I guess is tonight, but that's, that's what we understand about it. I don't know if there's anything more to add.
Okay. Counsel Macaulay.
Yeah, if that's the case, I'd ask the administration to submit a transfer of the $45,000 difference to go forward, call it belted suspenders, call it whatever you want. But we have plenty of time to do that. We can encumber the funds by the 30th for the deadline of the cultural grant. And since it's going to take four months to actually get there, will give us plenty of time to be able to do, again, an in-and-out type of transfer that is appropriate, I think, in this particular case. Thank you.
Counsel Zed.
Just want to add one last thing. Some years ago, I made an effort to have just a standing order, ordinance, that orphaned funds would be returned back to their source at the conclusion of a project. It wasn't the role of the council at the time. But I do think there's actually a lot of orphaned funds around. It happens naturally. You appropriate $100,000, it's 92.5, you know, where does the remaining goes? And typically what happens is it just sits indefinitely in that account, and then as a city council, you'll find all of a sudden a transfer with 19 different funding sources, all from $10,000 to $20,000 each. Doesn't seem structurally sound to me. If anybody wants to hint to me they reconsider that or consider that idea, I think it'd be nice to have clean books and send everything back to the source of funds. It doesn't mean they all have to go back to the general fund because, as you know, sometimes funds come from other sources, and they can return home, and then they offer us that debate. We lucked out a little bit with some gifts on the waterfront, but I think very sensibly, you'd be arguing if this is the best expenditure of that 45K, you know, towards this, when the park may still have other needs, but at least, you know, you'd have that discussion if you had that transfer.
All right, thank you. So the motion on the table is to approve the order, which is not budget-specific. Counsel Macaulay was requesting that that $45,000 be done as a transfer, so I think that the administration should consider that. And point taken by Counsel Zed in terms of the orphaned funds, so that may be for the Finance Director, who's not on the call right now. So, so right now, motion on the table is to approve the order. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call.
Roll call on approving Order 577. Counsel Granis.
Yes.
Counsel Harmon.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Macaulay.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zed.
Yes.
Counsel Doniu.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Should be a beautiful sculpture when it's finally in place. So moving on, motion to approve Appointment 488.
Second.
Wesley Eckhold to the Waterfront Trust until February 15, 2026. Thank you. So Ms. Eckhold was present at our committee meeting, and of course was present tonight. And to introduce herself, she is a longtime Newburyport resident. She's lived here since 1995, was a longtime member of the Newburyport Redevelopment Authority, NRA, serving as a treasurer. She was also at that time the liaison from the NRA to the Waterfront Trust, and so therefore knows the Waterfront Trust very well. The committee approved the appointment 3 to 0.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Macaulay.
Yes, Counsel President and Chair, I stand in opposition to this nominee, to the Waterfront Trust. I am going to go a bit old school by voicing my opposition tonight. It's no secret that this nominee during this past fall's election was out stumping with my opponent through the magic of modern technology, namely ring cameras. I got to hear firsthand the distortions of my record, character assassination, the untruths told about my family. But this is not why I oppose the nominee. I have thicker skin than people realize. Also during this fall's election, the editor of our local newspaper reached out to me to tell me that my big problem was that my standards were too high. I agreed with him. I do have high standards. I have the highest standard for myself, as I try to be a better person every day. I have high standards for an independent press, but unfortunately, we're left with the daily news. I have high standards for my colleagues, since only through collaboration can we push each other and get the best outcomes for the city. I have high standards for the volunteer boards that we have. We ask a lot of them when we need to support them. Of those boards, I have especially high standards for the Waterfront Trust. Through my years of support of the Committee of an Open Waterfront, I learned about the history of the Waterfront Trust. I learned that the group of citizens called the settlers sued the powers that be, and they won. And their reward was to be stewards of the land, keeping access to the public front and center. It's here where I oppose this nominee. To me, the Waterfront Trust should be above politics, acting in the singular interest and values of the trust. What this nominee showed, nominee showed through her actions, was that she's become a political hack, someone willing to trade on her name and reputation to impact an election that she couldn't even vote on as she lives in a different ward. As we finish up Phase 1 of the market landing park, the role of the Waterfront Trust could not be more important and more top of mind. How can we trust this nominee to act selflessly when our actions demonstrate otherwise? I ask you to join me in voting no. Thank you. I yield.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay, hearing none. We'll have a roll call.
Roll call on Appointment 4.
I'm sorry, Counsel Khan.
My hand's raised.
Yep, sorry, we're seeing it now. Go ahead.
Yeah, well, since, I apologize, but I just wanted to also, well, I just want to echo my support of this person for this role, having been on the council now at the time during a very difficult kind of disentanglement, or trying to, you know, I guess dissolve the Newburyport Redevelopment Authority. I found a lot of good experience and expertise that was brought to the table. It was a very, very, I would say contentious. You remember that. There are certain people in our community who are really lucky to have, and are really lucky to have their intelligence, their involvement, and the commitment. And yes, this person is not someone that just came out of nowhere. They are involved. They are involved in the city because they love this city. So I just really want to echo my support for this appointment, and I hope you support. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Counsel Khan. Roll call.
So roll call on approving Appointment 488. Counselor Granis.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Present.
Counsel Macaulay.
No.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
No.
Counsel Zed.
No.
Counsel Doniu.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Counsel Preston.
Yes, motion to approve Appointment 489, Curtis Davis, to the Waterfront Trust until July 1, 2029.
Second.
Thank you. So Mr. Davis was present at committee. To introduce himself, he again is present tonight and introduced himself in public comment. He, as he mentioned, is new to the community, moving here only a year ago, but does have a long history in civic service as a city manager in Johnstown, Pennsylvania for many years. He is very impressed with the park and very much looks forward to contributing to his new community. The committee voted 3 to 0 to approve this appointment.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. We'll do a roll call.
Roll call on approving Appointment 489, Curtis Davis. Counselor Granis.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel Macaulay.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zed.
Yes.
Counsel Doniu.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So that's it coming out of Community Services tonight, and not to be a gloat after the poor Budget and Finance Chair in front of me, but we actually do have a clear docket with the exception of a reappointment for the Anna Andrews, which came in tonight. So we are going to skip our next committee meeting, and we would be meeting next on July 1. Thank you.
All right, thank you. On General Government, we met earlier this evening for the appointment of David Pedo.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. For the Appointment 493, so this is David Pedo, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, thank you. So we met earlier this evening, which seems like weeks ago. And we did vote 2 to 0 in committee. We were joined by several other councilors. It wasn't a Committee of the Whole, but we did not have a quorum of the full council, so we were able to have a good discussion. So we were joined by Counselors Macaulay and Harmon. I think you did get the resume, which I emailed, and it is in the packet. So Dave, you can call him David, or you can call him Dave, he has been for over 20 years the IT manager of the town of Belmont, which is a little bit bigger population, but a similar number of end users. He mentioned 250 users. So he started as the network administrator. Sounds like he was the only person back then in 2000 or so, and became the IT manager in 2005. Has added several positions over time. I think, I believe there are like five people right now, database, GIS administrator, and systems administrator, and some desktop support, and admin assistant. You know, amongst, not going chronologically, but, you know, the question was that, he ran us through his resume, some of the things he's done, why interested in coming to Newburyport. The commute answer came up because he lives in Salem, and 128 is certainly no picnic. And kind of felt like Belmont was in a good place, was pretty much all set, was looking for a challenge. You know, his, you know, initial take on Newburyport, that we do have a good base. I know there were a lot of, you know, foundational elements put in place by Mr. Pope before he left, and Mr. Pedo thought there, you know, there's definitely challenges to move these things forward and get going on these projects. Some of the things he talked about unprompted were security is a real important thing, also using artificial intelligence with security, employee training. I personally like the quote, you don't have to use technology for technology's sake. Sometimes technology is not the best solution for whatever problem you're trying to solve. So we had some good questions from the councilors about sort of cloud computing and sort of his take on that, and some of our Microsoft 365, and how is that working. Belmont, Counsel Macaulay raised, Belmont has an IT committee that's set up, and, you know, how did that work? And, you know, there was a, that might not be a fit for here, but an IT users group might be something that we would do. And other questions from Counsel Harmon about security training. And, yeah, I think, I think that pretty much covers it. Think he, you know, I think he'd certainly be an asset here. You know, I asked a question about going from a department of, including the IT Director in Belmont with, it sounds like four, four or four and a half other staff. I think you're going to be a solo practitioner in Newburyport, and he was willing to be hands-on, looking forward to being hands-on. He said he might like to add positions over time, and we didn't, we didn't go down that road, but, but anyway, that is what he said. So, you know, seemed, seemed like, you know, certainly has a lot of experience, good personality, certainly be able to have a good customer focus to help us move this forward. So that's, that's what I've got to add. I will just ask, I didn't realize he had started. I heard that earlier tonight, so I'd love to hear a little bit about the chronology there, because it's probably not a good idea to start somebody until they're appointed, so I'd like to hear the rationale there. So that's my report, and open up to any other comments and discussion, but motion on the table is to approve.
So.
Counsel Lane.
So if he's already started, what are we approving?
Yeah, Andrew Levine, if you want to answer, just sort of in terms of the timing of, so it sounds like he started a couple of days ago.
He started last Monday.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the appointment probably, the appointment probably should have been submitted sooner.
Yeah.
Is it lined up with the contract dates?
There's no contract in this position.
He's a, he's an employee at will. There's no, that's why there's no end date on his...
That's correct. This position is not one of the ones that's in the ordinances or charter as an appointed position, but it is a department head, and the council does approve of all department heads. The question about contract, he will either be a member of the Department Head Union, or he will be an employee at will. That position is under negotiation right now in the contract.
I'm not following, I'm not, that's not tracking. So there is, there is a contract for the IT Director, correct?
There is not. It is not a contract position. It is, in the past, either been a member of the Department Head Union, or serves as an at-will employee.
But there is a contract for it? No? He's just hourly?
It's either under the contract for Department Head Union, or it'd be at-will, so that would not be a contract position.
Okay. Counsel Zed.
My question is, does the city intend to just stop the consulting engagement with the former IT Director now that the new, I know that there was some crossover there.
Yes, that engagement has ended. That has ended. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Counsel Khan, sorry, missed you there.
Yeah, that's okay. So, sorry, I did not make General Government. I wasn't able to ask the questions that I was wondering about, but I think Counselor, Counselor from Ward 6 did kind of mention a thing about the contract. One of the things I just want to mention is that it is helpful in our new hires, and I maybe this is more for administration. You know, we're looking for really, I guess, stringlining our administrative expenditures or full-time employees. And sometimes, you know, my understanding is, you know, with the IT position, having been vacant for as long as it has been, and then having support where we see, my one thing is, you know, I don't know how many resumes we looked at, how competitive the process it was in bringing on a director, which is a significant role. So I would feel like this seems rushed, and I understand, you know, we've been, this vacancy has been kind of one that we have seen previously, and we see again. And I can appreciate it's hard probably to get this full IT directors, but I do feel like it often feels rushed, and it's really hard for us to bring someone on and not fully know the longevity, how long they want to be here, and also the expectations of this department in the bigger picture of the city and the city's needs. So I do feel like there's a lot of questions, and I know we haven't had the IT department yet before, or if we did, I missed it, I'm very sorry. But I think that's going to be important during our budget time. So I just wanted to pose a question for the administration. And so maybe just to ask one simple question, how many folks apply for that position?
So I won't count all the, we get a lot of applications through Indeed that often require more screening and aren't often serious candidates. I think we had about eight serious candidates for this position, and we had some very strong applicants come in. So we were happy with the quality at this time. It was very different from the last time when we couldn't really find that right person. We did have our pick in this case, which was great.
Just quickly, it does, it does seem, thank you, it does seem in poor taste to have a person start a position and then have the council vote on it. It just doesn't, I agree with my colleague from Ward 6, it seems like a moot point voting on it. I realize that it is something that has to be voted on, but I feel like going forward, positions like this should be voted on first before this person becomes part of the payroll, and it just doesn't seem right. I yield. Thank you.
Yes. Counsel Macaulay.
Yeah, I'd like to just put a glass lean onto this fire a little bit, because what if we said no, right? Or what if we said, because our role is supposed to not only approve the nominee, which we, you know, we most likely welcome any nominee who wants to work here to the city, but we also have to approve their salary, right? And we don't know anything about that. That's part of what we do. We don't, we shouldn't be surprised with it in the budget going forward, right? That, oh, they were half this year, and then the really, the other half kicks in next year. And the previous IT Director, we had some things that we didn't know about, and were told they were employee at will, but it was a pretty generous employee at will contract, we have to, we have to admit to. So again, I guess it's through the Council President. I'll ask you to push the administration to have nominees and their payroll and all of that before us, before they actually start going forward. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll take that under consideration. I don't, the payroll, I'd have to think about that, and, because I don't, we're not, we're not getting into salary negotiating. I think their pay is what's budgeted for that position.
Yeah, well, maybe I misspoke on that aspect, but we do, we do actually, we can fund a position or not fund a position based upon what's there. We can fund, we can go back to square one to fund it. We can go back to different steps. We, as the, as the revenue authority here, can actually make those directions that go forward. I don't think it would be in, you know, in, without being in lockstep with what the administration is working for, but I'll use an absurd example, that let's say the negotiation netted the fact that the new IT Director, and I'm picking on him, had a lifetime contract at $400,000 a year. We don't know that. And you can say that's an absurd example, but look at Mathewin and their police chief that they had for 15 years, who was getting paid $375,000, and they couldn't get rid of him because the... rid of them because the contract and the negotiation all came in and was, oh, don't worry about it, we've got it all under control. Again, that's an extreme example. I'm not suggesting anything here. All I'm suggesting is that if we're going to be part of the process, we probably should be at the 95% range level as opposed to the 105% level afterwards. Thank you.
All right. Point taken. Thank you. Councilor Lane?
There's a salary listed of 125,000 on this advertisement here. Is that what we have? So that matches our budget for an IT director that I've just told you was hourly?
That matches the salary in the budget that was submitted to this council, yes.
This, to me, I go back to when we had the problem with the HR director a couple of years ago where she assumed the role before the appointment and it didn't match up with the contracts. I feel like this is the road we're going on where we don't know, just as the council from Ward Five said, what's promised in the contract. I mean, you say there's no contract, but he accepted a position with a salary of 125,000. Did he not sign anything to say he's going to get? So if we come back and we say, okay, actually, we're going to cut that to 110, what's that going to do to his employment now?
He's, he's a municipal employee. He's aware that it's subject to appropriation. And he's, he's been doing this a while. All of our salaries are subject to appropriation. But it is, it does match up with the salary that's in the budget and was submitted to this council.
But he's, he signed the line saying he's getting 125,000 somewhere, I assume.
Subject to appropriation, like every contract in here says.
Just, it feels like we're going backwards here. We did this before a couple of years ago and it was ugly, so I don't know how I'm going to vote here.
Okay. Any further discussion? Councilor Khan?
Yeah, sorry, I can say one last thing. So I think the Chief of Staff would be excited. So the budget that's set for the IT director that we, and now I remember we had this our first, I think, budget, maybe, that we talked about the IT director at the time, we didn't have someone. But would you say that that's in par with the agreement? And my second question is the support coordinator role, which we did, I believe, talk about as well. Is that something that, you know, what's the timeline at some point? Because I think we already had the IT department before, it's hard to ask these questions, but I think what in the power also be to understand what our budget commitment is and if that still aligns with what was, what's Carlene there?
Yes, there's no plan to ask for additional appropriation to cover the staff of the IT department. It fits well within the budget that has been submitted to this council.
So if I can just add as a point of clarity, I'm looking, I'm not able to share it, but from the FY '24 adopted budget, yeah, the IT Salary Director as approved for FY '24, which is what we're finishing up, was 128, 750. The, and I forgot about the Support Analyst that was adopted at 81,370. So it is a, it is a two-person department, according to the budget. Okay. Councilor McCauley?
Yeah, I just want to say this has nothing to do with the candidate. It has to do with the process. I personally, I found the candidate engaging and knowledgeable and probably a good fit for the city based upon what goes on here. But I think the debate is worthwhile that we're, as Counselor from Ward Six, we're askew from where we think we're going in a process. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Roll call.
Roll call on approving Appointment 493. Councilor Granis?
Yes.
Councilor Harmon?
Present.
Councilor Khan?
Yes.
Councilor Lane?
I'm present as well.
Councilor McCauley?
Yes.
Councilor Preston?
Yes.
Councilor Shan?
Yes.
Councilor Wright?
Yes.
Councilor Zede?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Dunne?
Yes.
And Councilor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. That is it for General Government for tonight. Licenses and permits?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a motion to approve Application 206.
Second.
Thank you. This is an application that's come before us in the past. It's a combined 5K run and 5K walk. It originates and ends at Michael's Harborside and it's to benefit the greater Newburyport ovarian cancer awareness. All of the sign-offs have been received, the insurance is in, is in order.
Okay, any discussion?
We've voted three to zero to bring it out.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call, Application 206.
Okay. On approving 206, Councilor Granis?
Yes.
Councilor Harmon?
Yes.
Councilor Khan?
Yes.
Councilor Lane?
Yes.
Councilor McCauley?
Yes.
Councilor Preston?
Yes.
Councilor Shan?
Yes.
Councilor Wright?
Yes.
Councilor Zede?
Yes.
Councilor Dunne?
Yes.
Councilor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Application 203 and 207.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. These are both block party applications. 203, I think everyone's very familiar with. It's the road closure request for Temple Street, from Federal to Fair Street. This occurs on the night of the bed races. So at the end of the bed races, they, they close the.
Can you just mention the circumstances on 203 because it's not, it's not listed in the packet? Yeah, thank you.
It was just an, it was just left off of the agenda inadvertently, so. We did vote it, it's been in committee, we voted it out of committee. It just didn't make it on the agenda.
Great, thank you.
So without objection, I'll go, I'll continue with that. Again, all the sign-offs have been, been received for that, for that request. The other is also a block party. This is also tied to an event. This is an application from Melissa Duncan on Dove Street and this is the night of the fireworks where they do the same thing. They, they, they close both ends of Dove Street and they have a, a community party
It was on committee page.
that occurs at the end of the fireworks. This was also voted out of committee three to zero.
Great, thank you.
No, no. I got you. Thank you.
Any questions on Application 203 and Application 207? Councilor Shan?
Just standing in massive support of Application 207 as the Dove Street party is the best party on the night of the fireworks, just saying.
All right. Roll call.
Roll call on Application 207 and 203. Councilor Granis? Councilor Harmon? Councilor Khan?
Yes.
And Councilor Lane? Councilor McCauley? Councilor Preston? Councilor Shan? Councilor Wright?
Yes.
Councilor Zede?
Yes.
Councilor Dunne?
Yes.
And Councilor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Wright, all set?
We just have, we couldn't get our calendar squared away for the Greek Food Festival, another fabulous event, but I'm hoping that they'll attend our next meeting to get approval in, in time for, for their event. And then there's one other event that's also staying in committee, also because we, I was unable to successfully reach the, the sponsors for that. But hopefully they'll be attending at our next meeting.
Okay.
Which will be not this Wednesday, but next Wednesday.
Thank you, Councilor Wright. Councilor Shan?
Thank you. Motion to approve Order 578, MBTA Communities Confirm Proposed Submission to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Second.
So we had a few meetings in May, most folks will remember, where we've been trying to gain consensus on what the zoning needs to look like for MBTA communities. We have to meet the 1292 requirement from the state. And what the majority of folks came around to was that we agreed with the Zoning Advisory Committee, which is to make sure that we expand the 40R district down Parker Street with a slight jog. And we also included Heinz Way in this. So what you see in this order is what we asked Director Port to do, since we can't vote on a communication, we voted, we're going to vote in an order that gives him the permission to go to the state. And this is not a binding on anyone's vote here, but since we all have a consensus going where we believe this is what we're going to have in the ordinance come fall, we just want to give him the opportunity to go to the state with this number to make sure that they are in agreement with the 40R expansion. So folks know, we do have to, we agreed that the density would stay the same as what's currently in the 40R next to the train station, it is the 40 units per acre. The order would go out, presuming we approve it tonight, would go out to the state within the next few weeks and we would expect a reply back within 90 days from the state. We did request that we have a public meeting beyond just the Joint Planning Board Committee meeting with the Planning, Planning and Development Committee meeting come the fall once we get the approval back. The other item is, we did ask what the vote count was and this would only be a six-person vote which approves the zoning. So with all of that, this order is specifically giving the council permission to have Director Port send this document to the state to get approval for what we're going to submit for MBTA communities.
Okay. Thank you. And Director Port is on here as a panelist if we need him. Counselor, Counselor Zede, tomorrow.
Thank you, President. I'm going to be voting present tonight and I just want to explain why. This is actually giving me a lot of heartburn, so I, first of all, I want to split up my comments into two parts. One is on the policy itself. So I think that the, the Zoning Advisory Committee did, and the Planning Board did an admirable job of trying to basically conform with the state's mandate. I personally think the Zoning Advisory Committee's proposal is superior, as the chair stated, to the, to the one come up with the Planning Board, although I understand what the Planning Board was trying to do. The reason I have heartburn is that I still can't bring myself to feel that it's good for Newburyport and I understand that's the heart of this debate. The reason I feel that way is we have such a small amount of commercial in the city and it's under a lot of pressure, is how I look at things. We have essentially, you know, the industrial park, we have Story Ave and we have Downtown. We have a strong desire for more housing, we understand that and we understand why. What's giving me heartburn is that this essentially, and the way that MBTA communities is written, is it really requires you to take commercial because of the way they do the computations. You can't expand your multifamily, say, in residential zones because the lots are so small, it takes you forever to get the credit you need. So instead, we're doing what, whether by intent or not, we're pushing into our industrial park, our business park, which ironically, we've talked, we talked heavily about from an economic development standpoint, although I'm not sure what is left economically developed if we're just simply pushing more and more for housing. So that's one challenge. The second is, there are better opportunities for the city of Newburyport. I think everybody recognizes that there's strong potential at Story Ave and based on the mayor's update from last time, that may become a real conversation sooner than later. And then we have other opportunities, say, with Waterfront West. And keeping in mind that MBTA communities is not about affordable housing, it's just about more housing, with the theory being more is going to lend itself to having more options, is going to lend itself to a more broad market. So I'm just kind of stuck between that rock and a hard place where I accept and I acknowledge and I wanted to say publicly that, yeah, we, I think we've come up with something that's the most reasonable way we could accommodate MBTA. The point is, is if we didn't have MBTA, we wouldn't be likely having this debate because we have other, better opportunities to develop what we want, again, namely at Story Ave and possibly at some other sites in the adjoining space there, getting potentially all apartments and being able to count the, the full 100% and getting 25% affordable instead of capping out with this. So I'm going to kind of keep thinking it over, but for today, I'm just going to vote present, but I wanted to at least explain why I came to that conclusion.
We have Counselor Khan and Counselor Shan.
Can I just answer real quick?
Counselor Shan will answer a question, then Counselor Khan. Khan?
So I'm, I'm not going to change your vote, but I did want to say that this was the easier putt to get us to it this year, given the timeline we have with MBTA communities, because we expect it's going to take, be a 90-day turnaround for the state and we're not, probably not going to get this out until the end of June. So that gets us into September timeframe. Presuming that all works out, then we still have to go through our own ordinance process. So I mean, if we were trying to do what we're hoping we're going to do at Story Ave, we would not make the December timeline for getting our MBTA communities zoning approved. So just putting it that way.
Can I just reply really quickly?
Sure, go ahead.
I just want to just be very clear that I don't think Story Ave is, I don't want to do MBTA there. I'm just saying, in the grand scheme of trying to develop more housing, we have these opportunities. That's the other rock and a hard place is that, you know, we wouldn't want it, in my opinion, MBTA, as I'm using it as a verb now, Story Ave, because it creates less control and less opportunity for us to make sure that we're not making public, private costs, that we're maintaining public safety, all the things that we're supposed to do in development agreements and all the stuff we talk about. So I appreciate the chair's clarification. I just want, didn't want anybody to think I was headed that way because getting, taking Story Ave out early, I thought was a very wise move by the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I do, I have to say that this has been a really interesting situation across the Commonwealth for the MBTA communities whole effort and having been on the zoning advisory group and listening on the planning and development committees, the conversation about what we're doing, I do think this has been a good process in terms of bringing kind of the engagement and understanding of our current zoning ordinances. And I do really want to kind of highlight and say that we are in such a good position compared to some of the other MBTA communities who have struggled due to not having had already, you know, the 40R as well as some other new housing and our other aspects in our zoning ordinances that have been established that made this process. And I really want to give a shout out for those involved in council to, to, to adopt those, those types of policies because that did help us in being able to kind of maximize on the opportunity. I want to just also highlight and give a heads up that if anything, this also has an engagement of a broader community. Some folks that were off the zoning advisory group that are just, they're citizens, they don't sit on any boards or commissions right now, but they were brought in. And I think now to, to really look at our zoning, this is the opportunity. And I, and I'm just kind of calling this out for my fellow colleagues on the council that what this has shown us is that housing is a critical issue in our community and that there are going to be places we need to look at and maybe just review from a really proactive way so that we're not kind of in this situation where we really did have to come up with something quickly. So, but I do want to say that this has really highlighted what we've done in the past and been able to now move ahead with it in a way that will actually, I think, encourage a good outcome for, for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Motion is on the table, made by Counselor Shan, seconded, I believe, by Counselor Donahue to approve Order 578 and we'll move to a roll call.
On approving 578, Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Present.
Counselor Dunne?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Counselor Shan.
All right. Motion to receive and file Communication 554.
Second.
This is the communication that basically defines all the stuff we discussed with MBTA communities, given the density requirements, how we came about, and this is just a receive and file. And the committee voted three to zero on the prior one and this one as well.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion on receiving and filing Communication 554? Hearing none. Roll call.
Roll call and receiving Communication 554. Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Dunian.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you.
And last but not least, just want to give a heads up on how the prior meeting before council went tonight, where we had the fastest-ever planning and development and planning board joint hearing ever in my seven years. We went through the zoning for Low Street within a record 19 minutes, and the planning board approved it. We are going to add an amendment that was requested by Counsel Wright, which is basically to state that if we do not have funding or go forward with the recreational center at 59 Low Street, that the zoning would not go through. So, Director Port's going to work on that language. We will discuss that next week in our committee. We did vote for it, three to zero out of committee tonight. We were obviously not going to have it tonight, but next week, we will have a planning and development committee meeting prior to budget, and we'll have it at 5:30 for that specific one, just to make sure the language is correct. And we'll enjoy Mr. Counsel Wright being on the train again for that meeting. So, 5:30 PND next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Shand. Public Works and Safety, Counsel McCauley.
Thank you, Counsel President. Motion to approve Order 566.
Second.
Okay. This is a five-year contract for trash, pickup and hauling only. I think the attached memo that came from the administration creates a bit of confusion by crossing the streams, no pun intended, of hauling and disposal. This is about pickup and hauling only. We have previously signed a disposal agreement with Wind Waste, the incinerator company out in Haverhill. So, with this particular contract, the program, it's a five-year contract, as we said. The program will be manual trash pickup, semi-autid recycling, semi-automatic recycling, like we're doing today. The pricing itself covers five years with renewal option after that. Year one is a immediate 6% increase, takes it to $1.63 million. It increases roughly about 3.5% of year with options for fuel. At year five, it's roughly about 12.8% increase at 1.87. Again, this is simply for trash pickup and hauling. The metric used is number of houses. So, we can, we also can reduce this number by about $78,000 annually with a contract for a third party with Republic for handling recycling post pickup. The ask tonight, though, is to sign the contract with G. Mello and amend this going forward. There's already a provision in the contract that if we sign a third-party agreement, then we can automatically deduct that out, so it's not a contingency either way. The contract itself goes through some fine point details, which I won't get into, but in general, they talk about the forms needed, there's multiple forms needed by the state, insurance coverages that protect us and them, liquidated damages that are in our favor in case we get money back, in case there's problems, and there's detailed items of payment terms and things like that. In Section 2, there's a definition of the service area. There's no change from today of the service area. So, if you have trash pickup today, you will have trash pickup when this contract starts. And we have a 5% increase built into it, defined by the number of units, built in for growth at no additional charge. So, anything above 5%, we would have to renegotiate the contract, et cetera. So, again, no change to routes, still weekly pickup, bi-weekly recycling. It includes Christmas tree pickup, yard waste included, and all of that. Where some of the confusion might have come in, it came in with an accompanying ordinance, which we pulled, which I pulled and will resubmit at our next meeting. And in that future ordinance, we will be asked to increase the bulk sticker rate from $5 to $10, to decrease household limits from 96 gallons to 64 gallons, and to potentially introduce the use of overthrow bags at a price of $2 a bag. We'll also try to introduce a waiver process to include private roads not yet included. But those are not related to this particular contract now, and they did create some confusion in our committee, in our discussion, and so we thought it best to be able to just focus on the contract itself. And it came out three to zero for approval of the contract.
Thank you. We do have Molly Edinburgh out there in Internet Land, if she wants to add anything. Counsel Lane.
So, there's no additional coverage zones in this? I was under the impression that there is. So, is there, if there's no change, there's nothing added? I'm just asking, because there's a couple of neighborhoods that I thought were going to be.
So, there are, in the contract itself, there are proposed additions for, there's the former Evergreen area, as well as Colby Farm area, et cetera, along the way. But they haven't gone through and approved waiver process going forward. So, they're identified to be included in this contract. We have to pass the ordinance and agree to next week to be able to do that, to allow them. Part of the ordinance waiver process includes a letter of liability, insurance that they have to cover, as well as releasing us from taking on responsibility for snow plowing and other types of city services. That has gone through legal review. We don't have the final document back yet, which is part of why we didn't introduce it. But those areas, and that area in particular, I think there's 38 units or something like that, are, can be included in this contract for no additional price, and we could probably get the, instead of 7-1 on the contract, realistically, it's probably September 1st along the way, something like that. Okay?
Thank you, Counsel Lane. Counsel Z.
Thank you for the, for all the information. My question is about amendment. In a few places in the contract, it discusses, you know, for example, if automated collection becomes, they phrase it as, you know, proposed for the city, they don't actually say who proposes it, but I suppose it could be either party. Then it just says, "We're working good faith to work," you know, "to negotiate." So, I just want to be clear that that means that some kind of an addendum would be created for this contract, and it would come back through the same process that effectuated the first, that this vote does not basically give up the right to, on the city council, to discuss future amendments, that this contract would need to be amended in the same way it was passed, meaning typically, the administration would negotiate and agree, and then bring it through the council, let's say if it was an addendum or a change to it. This has been a gray area in the past, where there are side letters, there's all kinds of things that happen, or agreements are amended without coming back through the council. So, maybe partially rhetorical question, I'm just saying that I'm asking it nicely as a question, but that's what, in my opinion, should happen. And so, I just want to know if that came up in committee.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes, it did. It came up. It's part of the bulk of the contract that's there. There are a lot of forms, there are a lot of required forms from the state that produce transparency, which were never there before. So, when we look at previous contracts, it was ripe for side letters, or agreements, or handshakes, or things like that. None of those things can happen now with the documentation required. I think there's a, there's an anti collusion letter that has to be signed, and certified, et cetera, along the way. When we talk about automated collection, everybody wants to get to automated collection, but the process is a bit steep. The trucks have to actually work, and they have to have enough of them to mechanically work, and we have to have a uniform type of trash receptacle. We're not prepared to produce a uniform trash receptacle and pass them out. There's additional fees, we talked about that, could be upwards of $400,000, and then what do you do with your existing trash barrels? I think the, if we're messaging anyone, buy a 64-gallon trash barrel that's kind of rectangular, and I think you'll probably be all right for going forward for potential of automated collection. But that's where we are with that. So, I'm sure Mello would want to get to automated collection, but they can't, although they can do it, quote-unquote, you know, at will, they really can't do it at will, because the automated collections don't pick up green bags, and they don't pick up round barrels, and they don't pick up the things that, you know, we see every day in a trash-specific world. So, I think that the contract itself, with the multiple layers in here, would, is introducing transparency for the first time in these types of contracts, that would force both parties back to the table to negotiate, you know, an amendment or an amendment to the contract.
Just have one other.
Yep.
Just one other follow-up. I know that the ordinance is probably where we're going to talk more about the volume, but in the contract, it does say, you know, you can have, it basically implies, it says literally the 232s or 164. This is, this was a big part of the debate a few years ago. I don't know if Molly could help answer, but is there any information or idea about how much trash will be left behind? Let's say, if you were to stop at 64 across the city, how, what are we talking about in terms of volume? Do we have any idea, even if it's approximated, if there's any sort of data around that?
Molly, yeah, if you could go up to the microphone, that'd be great.
Just in general, most people don't put out more than 48 gallons, so there's not a lot of people that are even putting out 96 gallons right now. If we didn't pass the legislation that's coming forward, we could tell Mello that, you know, what we need them to pick up, and it won't be left behind. But I don't think there will be much left behind at all.
Okay. I would just.
The volume doesn't really matter to the contract at all.
Weight, right?
Yes. That, it's the weight, and that is where the disposal contract comes in, and so we're paying by weight. It doesn't, what they care about is the mileage and the number of households.
I see.
And we can increase that by 5% per year.
Okay.
Counsel President, I just want to interject. This is part of, this is part of crossing the streams, right? So, this is per-unit household, right? So, households gone by and passed and things like that. That's what this contract is about. The weight is irrelevant to this type of contract going forward. We roughly do about 5,400, 5,400 tons of trash a year. Part of the ordinance is to try to help people reduce that going forward, but as far as Mello's concerned, if there's 30 bags out there, they can pick all 30 bags up until we tell them not to going forward. And that's part of what's going on. They will pick it up for the same price. We're trying to reduce our trash volumes to comply with state rules, which, again, add another level of complexity, but they don't affect the weight of this, you know, there's no weight in this particular contract. There's no volume in this particular contract, other than units of homes passed.
Okay, I'll go for now. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none online. So, the motion was made and seconded to pass Order 566?
Correct.
Okay, roll call.
Roll call on approving Order 566. Counsel Grantis.
Yes.
Counsel Hammond.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shand.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Dunian.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
There's nothing further. I will take, we had a couple of things we held over, the infamous trash ordinance that we held over. I think there'll be some heartburn on that when we talk about it a little bit more. That'll be, hopefully, we'll discuss at our next meeting and be able to get some answers to that, and be able to tie it back to what we talked about today going forward. And our meeting is set from its regional time on the 17th. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. That is the end of the committee reports. Good of the order.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded, and we will do a roll call.
Roll call on adjourning. Thank you. Counsel Grantis.
Yes.
Counsel Hammond.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shand.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Dunian.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
That's a wrap. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Khan. See you all later.